Good afternoon, morning, whatever. Today is Monday, February 24th, 2020, and this is a regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission, so welcome, everybody. Tiffany Edwards, I'm the chair. And the first thing on our agenda is a public comment period. At the Planning Commission reserves 10 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for public comments. Public may comment on any matter except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. So I've got a few folks here, and I'll go ahead and just call them up. If you would come up to the seat here and give us your name and address and then whatever you'd like to say. I've got Dennis Sandow first on my list here. Welcome, Dennis.
Thank you very much. My name's Dennis Sando. I live at 123 Fur Lane, Eugene, Oregon. Tiny, tiny neighborhood. Fur Lane connects to Maury Jacobs Park, Lombard, East Briar Cliff, all in the Whittaker Community Council jurisdiction area. Just wanted to share some facts. First fact being, this, in this past year, I had mentioned to you that you all serve as a Citizen Involvement Committee. That's your charter. You weren't aware of that at the time, but City Council confirmed that. Second fact, I have written two op-ed pieces on the negation of Goal One. If you all read the Oregon Guide to Planning, it says there's a reason why we call it Goal One. It's most important. It's been turned into Goal None, as far as I could see. Third fact, we neighbors met with City Manager John Rees in our neighborhood, and Mr. Rees said this. "I was reminded of the richness of individual and collective stories that define the sense of a place in a neighborhood, more so than the physical space. Not all neighborhoods share the social capital that flows through your neighborhood, and the challenge, it seems to me, is to find ways to continue and refresh the threads of change as change occurs. I learned that the caring and commitment articulated through the stories has sustained the sense of place in your neighborhood for decades." Fact four, the citizens of Fur, Lombard, and Briar Cliff live in the Whittaker Community Council jurisdiction. The WCC was never informed of this project. We were left out. The problem being that we provide very unique social services in our neighborhood for seniors and people with developmental disabilities, those requiring mobility support. When we notified city planning staff at an RRSC meeting that this was so, their response was to request how we could rectify this. I asked them to come to our neighborhood for a one- to two-hour meeting so they can understand the unique social services being provided, and their response was, "Unfortunately, at this time, the Planning Division does not have the capacity to take on a separate planning process for your neighborhood." Fact six, even though there are several email requests, I sent to LTD to share the evaluation plan for the RRSC grant, LTD never responded to a single email. Fact six, excuse me, yeah. Fact seven, there are no social impact measures in this plan. What are you going to do when the population explosion brings an explosion in homelessness, crime rates, property crimes? You're already hearing it from businesses in the community. Without any social impact measures, this plan should not advance. There are no greenhouse gas measures. I understand that the city has a particular point of view on sustainability and climate change. Why aren't there any greenhouse gas measures? There's no measures of the impact of this project. Fact eight, the RRCS excluded the fact that the Ruth Bascom Bike Pass serves people who require mobility support. This exclusion is a violation of the American with Disabilities Act. I would support the city and LTD being sued for this violation. Densification in our neighborhood will result in the destruction of lanes that exist there now, that slow traffic can provide safe and equitable transit. Fact nine, despite claims that the RRSC followed the International Association of Public Participation Spectrum of Public Participation, these facts prove that was not the case. So I urge you, as you'll see going forward, Whittaker Community Council will still not be part of this process, even though we neighbors who live in the WCC will be directly impacted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where would you like this?
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Next, I have Rob Handy. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Rob Handy, and I want to thank the Planning Commissioners as volunteers for all the tremendous efforts that you put in, that I appreciate the paid folks too, but as volunteers, I got to hand it to you, so thank you. Okay, so we've been at this a long time in River Road and Santa Clara. So, September 1987, this is before computers, right? So just being able to produce something like this was a miracle, right? November 2000, it's the River Road, Santa Clara Background Report. Again, we've been at this a long time. September 2002, the River Road, Santa Clara Urban Services Committee's Final Report and Recommendations. Some people have been doing this a long time, right? 2004, Issues and Findings Report and Summary of Stakeholder Interviews, Eugene's Historic River Road. This was wonderful. Hopefully, some of you have seen that. Public Outreach Report on the River Road, Santa Clara Transition Project, June 2006. So I and many others have been involved in this a long time, and some of you have also, or maybe you're also aware of some of what's happened. So at one point during the transition project, and thanks for public comment, and we did public comment too, one person said, "Why can't the city of Eugene implement these plans?" And this person said, "They'll keep starting new plans over and over until they get what they want, which is more density out here." And I thought that was a cynical point of view at the time. However, that thought has stayed with me. Why can't we implement plans? And now we have this plan with lots of lofty language in it, and you also have received testimony from someone who, by a reasonable person's standards or calculation, the only outcome may be to double density in River Road and Santa Clara. Is that the outcome you're looking for with this plan? Or look forward to your work on this? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a work session on the River Road, Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan, and I think Chelsea is going to kick things off for us, and we'll provide an opportunity to introduce our guests and everything, so I'll let you go ahead and kick us off. Thanks, Chelsea.
So I'm Chelsea Hartman, a new senior planner in the Planning Department. I don't think I've been back to you all since I've transitioned into this new role as serving as project manager for the River Road, Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan. Today, we're going to do an update focusing mainly on the River Road Corridor Study, and we'd really like your feedback on the preferred zoning concept and the draft code framework that we'll be walking through today. And just flagging for you all that we will be coming back on March 10th for an update focused on the Neighborhood Plan and the action planning phase that we're still in. So if there's more detailed feedback, questions, or anything for follow-up, we can go over some of that at that next meeting as well. And I'll pass it over to our consultants to kick us off and introduce themselves as well.
Okay. Can everyone hear okay? Make sure I'm using the microphone properly. Thank you, Commissioners, for inviting us today to present specifically on the River Road Corridor Study update. My name is Ben Weber. I work at a firm called Sarah Architects out of Portland. I am the overall project manager for the consulting team, pardon me, working on the corridor study. And to my right is Chris Sensenig. He works at Raimian Associates out of California, specifically on the zoning and code implementation portions of this project. So together, we'll be walking you through an update on where we are with the draft preferred concept alternative for the corridor and some of the early thinking on the code and zoning framework for the project. To give you just a quick agenda of what we'll be spending the next 75 minutes or so on, introductions, I suppose we've handled that, a little bit of background on the project. And I know, please, obviously, feel free to stop us at any point if there's any context on this work. We've been at it since October 2018, so if there's anything that Chris and I are glossing over that you'd like more detail on, we're very happy to weigh in on that. And of course, Chelsea can also weigh in on the overall Neighborhood Plan context that's happening concurrently. We'll give a little bit of information on the code writing schedule, what we've come up to to this point, and then what's forthcoming in 2020. A quick overview of some of the previous concepts for the River Road Corridor. That will be fairly quick, hopefully, so that we can get to focus on the current preferred concept, showing you the basics of that and taking your questions, of course. And then getting into the code framework overview, and we'll describe a little bit more as to exactly what a code framework is and where that is in the process of this project, once we get to that point. We will conclude with a little bit of next steps, and then, of course, questions and discussion. We had previously met with Chair Edwards. She advised that we try to get through sort of each of these bullet points as a discrete section, so that we can get all that information out there, and that we can take questions from each of you as we kind of work our way through those sections. So it's a lot to get through in 70 minutes or so.
Ben, hang on one second. I just have a clarifying press.
Can you do me a favor in terms of just a public presentation? And it might be embedded in here, but if it isn't, can you please address the public involvement? How you've, so as you go through, who you've talked to in terms of the Neighborhood Association, like what that public involvement piece is for you? Have they seen this? So I just, rather than launching into the details, what's the context? Who's been involved? Who's seen it before, you know, as you're going through it? That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. As we get into some of the big substantive parts, I'll describe in more detail, you know, what committees and what review bodies have seen it to date. I guess I should say, right at the very outset, that the Neighborhood Plan, of course, convened the Citizens Advisory Committee. We've been working with a subset of that Citizens Advisory Committee, including Kate, who I know is in the audience, and John Belcher have been working with us hand-in-hand. They are also essentially members of the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee on the project. So those two and the subgroup, and at least as of a couple weeks ago, the full CAC has seen this content in progress. We've also had two significant online outreach survey efforts, two significant open house public event sessions. One was in February and one was in June of last year, just for the corridor study, and that's in addition to everything that the Neighborhood Plan has been doing, like the policy roundup, the pie in planning, which was back in December. So those are just a quick overview, but it's a very good question. Any of you have any questions on this agenda or anything else you want to make sure we address? Okay. I'm going to just jump into the schedule here real quick. We are, where are we? Basically, right here, at the end of the draft code framework writing process at this Eugene Planning Commission meeting. What we've been doing on this project, early stages doing code evaluation in early 2019, that's basically just us on the consultant team and project team coming to a deeper understanding of existing Eugene code and the impacts that's having in the River Road Corridor area, just kind of learning our baseline and kind of learning the ropes for where we are in the project. A code audit process, which we made a little bit of a real-time decision to think about the code audit as taking a lot of the lessons from the South Willamette coding process, a lot of the good thinking that went into that, and sort of auditing, is there anything from those zones or those development standards that would be applicable as we're starting to write River Road Corridor Area code? So that's, you know, an entire document that you all have access to through the project website, but just know that we worked with the city to try to extract some of those key lessons and think about, you know, the pros and cons of that South Willamette code as a starting point. The code framework, where we are now, is essentially a sort of an outline. It's the structure and the bones of a code, but as you'll see, we haven't written every standard and every detail of each particular item that a code would eventually, you know, regulate. That's the process that will be upcoming in the admin draft code here through March, April, and May, at which point we'll submit an administrative draft code for your review and staff review, and then another update to that into the public draft code right in the middle of the summer in July. So that's kind of the schedule for the next five or six months or so. All along the way, you know, you'll see in the summer, the significant public comment period on the code. We had a Technical Advisory Committee meeting on this several weeks ago. We have several more upcoming in the next three months, basically as we reach kind of interim milestones in the admin draft code. And then, once that document's prepared in May, the technical committee and legal review will fully get their hands on it and start wrestling with the real substance of the standards at that point. Any questions on the schedule here? All right, thanks.
One question.
Oh, yes.
You're supposed to come, going to circle back, you said, in like, you mentioned you were going to.
March 10th, we have another work session focused on the Neighborhood Plan action planning phase, and we can follow up on any additional questions or follow-up from this meeting.
That's not shown, obviously.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize. This schedule is focused really only on the corridor study components right now. There are, of course, concurrent steps happening with the Neighborhood Plan that we're very much a part of, so, yeah, I apologize for not including that explicitly here. I have to hit this button to go forward. So again, you know, the corridor study, key to this, when we started back in October 2018, is the idea that we're looking to implement the River Road, Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan along the more specific corridor study area, and later on, we'll have a map of exactly what that geography is. The step we're in particularly right now is looking at zoning and code as a policy and implementation step for a narrower geography along and roughly within a quarter mile of River Road, everywhere from the northern end at the Irving-Hunsacker intersection down to the southern end where Northwest Expressway intersects River Road closer to town. Can't get into too many details on the Neighborhood Plan. Of course, that would take sort of hours to go entirely through, but I do want to point out that, ooh.
Is that better?
Sort of.
Better to see that, but is there like a?
The room's actually going to clear out in the dark.
No. At this point, no.
Yeah.
If anyone is trying, has a question or anything, just kind of do this to me, because I can't see your faces, so.
Raise your hand.
I can't see your subtle head nods.
We're syncing up right now with the action plan stage of the Neighborhood Plan, and as Chelsea mentioned, that's what will be on your agenda in a few weeks on March 10th. With zoning and code, we're particularly looking at the land use topic of the Neighborhood Plan action plans, and we'll describe more how we're trying to create design intent and standards that are in alignment with the community's desire for strong and robust and sensitive transitions between different zones, supporting a mix of housing options, creating a thriving mixed-use corner, and very importantly, thinking about and adopting standards that help protect and preserve the unique character of the Willamette-Greenway area. So just know those are sort of four of many of the key outcomes of the Neighborhood Plan that we're trying to keep in mind as we go through the zoning and code exercise. To put a little finer detail on that, these are just a selection of those actions right now, like looking at a well-designed built environment, you know, with an emphasis on transitions. How do you ensure that new development next to existing homes is somewhat matching in character and scale, not overwhelming? Thinking not just about the built environment, not just bricks and mortar, but also what else can happen on sites with energy production, conservation, water storage, and ensuring that a wide range of uses are allowed on these sites. And we know that agricultural uses are prevalent throughout River Road and Santa Clara, and we want to make sure to respect that and allow that to continue to be a viable and supported use in the community, for example. So that would just be one of the details we're working through in the zoning use list and the development standards that help ensure open space and access to light and water and fresh air and breezes. Ensuring compatible infill, you'll see coming up some of the zoning that we're applying within what is right now the R1 zone, anticipating, you know, some new development or redevelopment of sites or development of vacant sites. How do we ensure that it provides a wide range of housing options but is compatible with kind of the prevailing neighborhood character in terms of density and height and built form and so on and so forth? Looking towards affordability, not just capital letter A affordability, but how, by bringing in a wider range of housing options, can you serve people of different households and income levels and ages and abilities? Just opening up the neighborhood to more variety in the ways that people can live and exactly where they can live, you know, even at sort of market rate affordability. We talked about the idea of kind of the vibrant corridor and areas of particular activity along River Road. So are there places where mixed use or slightly higher intensity blends of uses, where people can live, work, play, and gather all together within a property, you know, a vertical mixed use or by uses side-by-side to help create some of that activity along River Road, and particularly anticipating, you know, potential significant transit investment in the area and trying to take advantage of those station areas that could be kind of dotted along River Road as major transportation nodes. And of course, again, back to Willamette-River compatibility and what can we do on existing sites and potential redevelopment sites as they happen to ensure that kind of rural, natural, ecological character along the Willamette River in this River and Garden District is preserved and enhanced? And a lot of that devil will sort of be in the details of these design standards, but we've known for two years how important this is to the community to emphasize and get these standards right. I should really, this is just a list for internal purposes. Chris and I are going to have to memorize this at some point. Just know that this is kind of a checklist of all these other topics that have come up during the Neighborhood Plan action planning that have a particular kind of zoning or code bent. So we've been pulling these out with Chelsea's help. This is kind of an internal checklist for us to make sure that we're reviewing against. One piece, and Commissioner Taylor, as you're asking about some of the outreach efforts, just in the last couple months, there have been a series of community conversations happening through the Neighborhood Plan where city staff and CAC volunteers have been going out and meeting with community members to talk about the progress with the Neighborhood Plan as well as the corridor study and to help introduce, you know, some of these policy actions that are in the pipeline right now, like this code adoption step. So this is just a screenshot of one of the pages that's sort of an exhibit during those conversations, helping people understand what zoning is and isn't and what some of the perceived, you know, major concerns and barriers with the development code are right now that we're trying to rectify. So I'll take a quick breather, I guess, ask if there are any questions on any of that background before we jump into a quick review of the previous concepts.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Can you guys share this with us after the meeting at some point? Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make sure to PDF this right afterward and get it to you by the end of the day, hopefully.
That's fine.
As I mentioned, we started working on the land use and zoning component of the corridor study back in about April of last year, and you could even say a little bit earlier, back into February, when we had our first major public event. That's when we came up with these design principles to just think about kind of the character, the built form, the natural ecology of River Road with access to the river and a green network, with creating a green network, with creating neighborhood centers, but also this idea of, let me laser point here, centers and not centers, knowing that along almost two miles of street here, it makes sense to balance, you know, small areas of more activity with, with areas of rest and less intensive growth and potential change. So the idea of centers and not centers. And then getting into some of the particulars of development standards, kind of anticipating our, our own future work, knowing about buffering existing uses and buffering the Greenway, thinking about landscape standards. What can you do with site development and streets to encourage active centers? So this is not part of a regulating document. This is just kind of a guiding set of ideas and principles that we're trying to keep in mind. This, along with everything that's coming out of the goals and objectives and policies of the neighborhood plan are really helping inform the, the structure and the content of the code that we're writing. Yes, Commissioner Baker?
I have a comment on this. I like the concept, but I just want to point out some details that impact that. City of Eugene now allows you to put rain gardens in the planting strip, cutting down on the number of trees that are being planted, because you can't plant, you can't plant trees in most rain gardens depending on the design. So there are other things you're gonna have to consider when you are outlining streetscapes.
Right, right.
You may have to make some other changes that weren't anticipated. This is the image that you're trying to create.
Yeah, and, and that's a very good point. None of this is, is gospel exactly necessarily as drawn, but what, what you're speaking about in terms of balancing how you allocate limited space in a streetscape or in a public park. Rain gardens are good, trees are good, but they're not always compatible. So that's a fair point to bring up and something we'll try to keep in mind as we're standardizing So we're gonna spend a little bit of a vocabulary lesson for the rest of the day. We have core MU, so corridor mixed use, core rez, so corridor residential, and then RM, which is residential middle, and then residential middle plus. So those are basically the four kind of fundamental new base zones that we've been thinking about and have introduced in these concepts. So keep, keep these in mind. And we, we've listed, just shown a couple examples of, you know, the mixed use, the kind of retail, mixed use, residential type development that, that we would allow and encourage in, in residential. Looking at townhomes, you know, low-scale walk-up apartments, quadplexes, cottage clusters. So it's sort of your, your House Bill 2001 kind of middle housing and even beyond that. So thinking about a higher intensity residential kind of scale that can happen. And then in RM, that's, you know, a little more literally, kind of thinking about the, the middle housing options and how to sensitively apply that throughout the corridor zone, that emphasis on duplexes and townhomes and quadplexes, those kind of classic middle types. So these are kind of the, the building blocks that we're working with. So I'm gonna quickly go through these concepts. There, there's a lot more detail available on these, on the project websites and that you can get from city staff if you wanna really dive into the, the nitty gritty and the evaluation. But starting, you know, way back in last year, taking that idea of active centers, increasing housing options, being really sensitive about transitions, protecting the Greenway, and also sort of respecting and reflecting the unique character of, you know, your R1 and your agricultural zones right now, how to be responsive to that and minimize impacts. So with concept one, this narrow, narrower area of denser housing, you'll see on the, the map at right, which is the after map with these new zones applied, we've taken existing C1 and C2 and converted that over to the CMU, the mixed use zone in darker red. We've taken R1 and ag parcels, but only ones that touch River Road or some of these quayside streets, like Irvine, Maxwell, Hilliard. There's eight or nine of these quayside streets running east and west. So also applying the corridor residential zone in those areas, thinking that they're higher activity streets and more suitable for that kind of sort of middle level housing options. And then in this case, a very small application in this yellow of the SFO option. So this is a, an earlier name for single-family options. You'll, you'll recognize that from South Willamette and really just using that as a, a transition zone between the corridor mixed use and the R1 to find something of a, a little bit more of a blend in, in scale and intensity between those two. But you'll notice it's very sparingly applied. So this is relying mostly on, on the CMU and the Crez to bring activity and, and sort of bolster some redevelopment and development potential along River Road and the quayside With concept two, the wider corridor of middle housing, you'll see the, the exact same steps with how we've applied corridor mixed use. So all the C1 and C2 converting over to that largely, and I should point out this, basically quarter-mile sort of study area that is River Road and then expanded out a quarter mile and then with some portions removed if they aren't in the River Road or the Santa Clara neighborhoods explicitly. So we're largely restricting the zoning to that quarter-mile area with a few little exceptions here for continuity. So that's the, the process on the corridor mixed use. On the corridor residential is, again, pretty narrowly applied, again, just on River Road with these parcels touching and not even fully continuous or contiguous across River Road. So those sort of lower-scale apartments and higher options in the, the middle housing range. What you do see here is a very broad application everywhere else in the quarter-mile of the yellow SFO zone. And so that's bringing in, you know, more permissions for those middle housing types, your cottage clusters, townhomes in some instances, duplexes and quadplexes, and, and really trying to allow those and encourage them under the right conditions throughout the entire corridor area. So it's kind of the, the, one of the big changes on, on concept two between concept one. And remember, these are all past concepts, so we're not even to the actual preferred concept at this point, so. So that's kind of the, the basics with these two. We wanted to point out that just in the, the latter half of 2019, we put both of these concepts out there for the broad community-wide survey, you know, over 400 responses to this online survey. This is just a quick snapshot of the support and strongly support levels for each of these. So at 50% for concept one, 61% for concept two. So, you know, general support, but of, of course, those, those red slices of the pie had some unfavorability ratings as well. But what we were getting out of this survey was, you know, in the comments, strong support for sort of the right sizing of the corridor mixed use code or zone, knowing that it, it only allows that 55 or 65-foot height as opposed to the 120 feet allowed in, in C2 right now. You know, that, that's a concerning height for a lot of people in the community, so bringing that down to a more manageable scale. And I think this bump in concept two, a lot of that reflects people being favorable of bringing that, that middle housing option zone throughout the entire quarter-mile area. So that's an idea that we've held on to when we get to the preferred concept that you'll see here in a second. Yes?
So in the survey, do you have a split of how many of these respondents were from the neighborhood and how many were from other parts of the city?
Yeah, we do have cross tabs on that. I don't have that on hand, but that's data we could run.
General idea that like 50% of the respondents were from...
Oh, I think it's an even higher percentage than that or from the neighborhood. Yeah. Yeah. Because this was sent...
Closer to 90.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was just trying to get at. How much of this was citywide?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Was neighborhood?
Right. I know it was sent to the interested parties list, which is over 1,000 people who are almost entirely River Road and Santa Clara residents or employees. So that was a key respondent group. And then just one other result out of that survey, we asked sort of generically about favorability of different development standards. You're seeing here that buffering with vegetation and other types of buffering, height limits, frontage requirements are all pretty popular and were predominant number-one choices of people. So this is just a, a data point that we're keeping in mind and trying to work towards as we're crafting these development standards and really paying attention to what's important to community members over the next couple of months. A quick review of the economic assessment. We've been using a tool called MapCraft, which does, does some development potential analysis. We've applied it to concepts one and two, and we will be applying it to the preferred concept here in the next month or so. But this has helped us think about, with any of this new zoning, is there, is there something about it that's a, a major shot in the arm for redevelopment or does it not have a huge impact one way or the other necessarily? And actually, kind of what we found is, you know, zoning makes a, a small difference on the margin for certain development types, but in and of itself, it's, it's not going to cause redevelopment to suddenly take off and skyrocket in the River Road community. It's not gonna make every vacant site suddenly become a, a new quadplex. It's gonna be a pretty gradual and sort of incremental change, at least as we expect it right now. And so it's, the impact of the zoning is, you know, perhaps more significant as bringing those development standards in alignment such that when stuff does get built and wherever it may be, it, it matches neighborhood character and helps create those, those places along the corridor that are active and exciting, but knowing that it's a decades-long kind of process to get there and, and has to align with other things like, you know, the potential transit investment that might come into the community as another thing that could be a, a real shot in the arm on the corridor. Because the, the other takeaway out of this is that MUP-T potentially has a, a pretty significant impact and makes things like two-to-four-story kind of low-rise apartments actually considerably more feasible and kind of economically attractive in some of these node areas. So we're also just weighing how to potentially apply some of those tools and incentives like MUP-T as a counterpoint to the zoning process that's underway right now. Any questions on this stuff so far, or any of the economic takeaways? We'll be submitting a, a big thorough memo, 50-some pages on this later on. So if you want to get down in the weeds on it, that will be forthcoming as we get into the plan adoption. Okay, so finally, onto the preferred concept here. I'm actually gonna jump over that one and just go straight to the zoning methodology graphic. You'll see a lot that is recognizable in this diagram. So we have, with the yellow, the RM, that's this residential middle, it was previously called SFO, but renamed it to RM. So that's broadly applied throughout the whole quarter-mile area with a, you know, a few zigs and zags to try to ensure block continuity and then some particular locations along the Willamette River and the Greenway where we're not applying it. We just think it's, it's more suitable to keep the R1 or the, the agricultural zoning in those particular locations to help, help with some of those Greenway protections. We then have the orange corridor mixed use running pretty much up and down the entire corridor. So that is R1, R2, and agriculture parcels that are touching River Road as well as any R2 in the entire quarter-mile area. That all gets switched over to the orange corridor residential. And then the rules for corridor mixed use are the same as they had been in concept one and concept two with just a few little tweaks. We removed this area of industrial, and then we've also taken any of the GO, general office parcels, of which there aren't that many. There's basically, there's one cluster of new homes that were built in GO and then a couple odds and end parcels around, but those are also converted over to corridor mixed use for sort of continuity and trying to create sort of just more logical centers along the street here. The other thing you're seeing on this map, we put these blue dots where the potential, believe this is the MX alternative for moving ahead. So these are the potentially identified station stops. So we know that those are areas that we want to try to leverage some of that transit investment and high-capacity transit that, that could be coming to the area. So you'll notice the alignment of that with the corridor mixed use zone as well as, you know, pockets of corridor residential. And we added, very preliminarily and very subject to change, but we added these white outlines on some of these parcels here. We're, we're considering this idea for frontage requirements or active use requirements on some of these parcels. So these white ones are just a very kind of early draft list of, of parcels that we might consider that kind of requirement on. Chris will get into more detail on like what that standard might be, and of course, is the question of if to apply it and, and if yes, then even how. So just know that that's, that's an additional piece you're seeing on the map here. So we sort of got to this point, of course, based on, on working with the CAC, the TAC, and community members on concepts one and two, basically trying to capture the, the best ideas out of those two. And you'll see a lot of that blended together here in the preferred concept draft. We've done a lot of fine tuning with Kate and John and city staff to make some of these minute and more detailed changes over the last couple of months. But we, I think we feel like we're, we're at the point where this proposed draft strikes a nice balance of encouraging some of those centers and active places, active nodes along River Road, bringing up potential for a little bit more intensity in housing options in the corridor residential along River Road and, and some of those areas kind of outlined into the neighborhood a little bit that are R2 right now. And then broadly, providing more opportunity with this RM zone to think about, you know, a wider range of middle housing kind of options and, and types such that redevelopment or new development on these properties could be something other than just a prevailing single-family home, which is what you're getting a lot of right now. Other opportunities for cottage clusters and duplexes and, and other kind of housing products of that type. And, and, you know, again, back to the devil being in the details, how we kind of write those standards is gonna be obviously very, very important for the RM zone in particular, knowing that so much of those is sort of point-by-point infill projects and also knowing that so much of River Road and Santa Clara is not in the city of Eugene to begin with right now, and that redevelopment can only happen with annexation of particular properties. So another kind of complexity in the whole process there to deal with, so, as, as I'm sure you all well know. So, that's kind of the long and short of this concept as it stands today. And I think we welcome your input and questions and thoughts, hopes, and dreams and concerns.
Do you all want to stop now for a few questions and then we can move on to Chris's portion?
Yeah.
Is that okay? Well, I had Commissioner Taylor in the queue if you had a...
Maybe we should turn the lights on.
That's happening.
I have two parts that's kind of overlap between both of your tasks that you have on this project is what I, and it could just be preliminary. I notice there's some kind of repetitiveness of existing code language, but the language is slightly different. So, and I, so where I, as a user, frequent user, creating new words or I just want to make sure that that's scrubbed through and probably earlier than better to maintain kind of consistency where there's language already in the code, that we don't have to redefine terms and then go through a lot of ambiguity with basically supporting this district because it's being, you know, interpretation, it takes time, or there's lack of clarity. So, wherever there's kind of already clear understanding of code language, let's use it. Let's not recreate it because those are tried-and-true interpretations. We know what, how to use it. It's gone through lube, et cetera, right? So, that's one. The other is, I noticed Kate is here. I just wanted to make sure. I wanted a better understanding of kind of, so essentially, this preferred concept draft, I just want to reiterate, has been looked at. It's coming from and vetted by all of the stakeholders, you know, City of Eugene, the public agency, as well as the neighborhood. Just wanted confirmation. Yeah.
Yep, it has been, and we're still going through that currently with the neighborhood conversations. So, it's still very much a draft. So, we're trying to get that detailed feedback now that we have a preferred concept instead of voting between two different ones.
Perfect. Thank you.
I've got Commissioner Fragala, and I'll go to Commissioner Ramey.
I know one of the design principles that was discussed frequently and that I often heard come up in some of the neighborhood public comment periods was the idea of a 20-minute community. And so, I'm wondering if you could address how this plan supports that. I mean, I see that, you know, kind of at the bottom, but then there's, you know, there's a bigger chunk in the middle between, I assume that's where North Eugene High School is up there, that big blue block, and then I can't quite read the streets on here. There just seems like there's a big chunk in the middle where we're not promoting that concept. So, could you address that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a really good point. And 20-minute neighborhoods have been sort of on the forefront for us. We know that, I think zoning and code is just one step on the way to getting to 20-minute neighborhoods. Right now, we have, you know, the pretty literal interpretation of taking C1 and C2 and converting that over to the corridor mixed use. Corridor mixed use being the place where, you know, both standalone businesses and mixed-use businesses would be, you know, emphasized and sort of most permitted. So, you're sort of responding to maybe a gap you're seeing here in the middle where that's not predominantly applied. I think that's something to keep in mind, definitely. And again, it's, you know, 20-minute neighborhoods is about encouraging places where within a 20-minute walk, people can meet their daily needs, their shopping, their coffee shops, their gym, their doctor's office. We don't know exactly what blend of uses and services would go into these spaces. We would hope that the development standards allow for a wide range of uses, everything from, you know, very small local community-serving places, you know, to some of those bigger destinations that might happen as well. And then that ties into other parts of the corridor study and the neighborhood plan that have to do with connectivity and open space and making sure that it's not just about what you create and where, but making sure that people can get between those destinations and overcome, you know, some of those gaps in the street network you have here. That's not quite as directly tied into the zoning and code process we're in right now, but it's all part and parcel to trying to make that happen. I think maybe just directly to your initial question, you know, if you're seeing that a zone is not applied in a place that maybe you would want it to be, I think we would welcome those comments as well, whether it's the corridor mixed use or any other.
Hi. So, I have two questions I think are probably going to be addressed by the staff, but they're kind of related. When we met in November, and the premise of this work is the idea that the community is growing. And so, we have an opportunity to accommodate that growth in a way that makes sense and preserves our neighborhoods. I just, I don't know that that is expressly stated in any of the work. I didn't see it as I read through it, but it seems to me a simple problem statement. And this is where I trapped Terry unfairly the last time around about, do we actually know what the number is? Are we looking to increase housing units? It could even be a percentage. By this change, we're going to increase the opportunity for housing in this area by 2%, whatever it is. Whether that aligns with the Envision Eugene goals or not, I don't know. I know we can't do that. Envision Eugene goals are for the whole community, urban growth boundaries for the whole community. So, we can't really take this slice out and say, okay, well, this slice, your share is 10 housing units, whatever it is. But, we can say, by these changes, we are promoting housing by this measurement. Well, I don't know if we can or not, but I think that would be a very simple soundbite that gets at both of our earlier comments we heard in public comment about what are we doing, why are we doing, what are we hoping to achieve by this? Because it can't be said often enough that that's as simple as what we're trying to do. Related to that is the LTD, the status of the LTD work in the corridor, because these things are related. We chose a certain kind of development. And what is the idea or what is our sense of the probability that LTD will go forward with what we think we need along this corridor? Do we know where LTD is on there?
Yeah. I think you're more familiar.
Hi, Teri Harding, Principal Planner for Long Range Planning. With regards to the LTD question specifically, the River Road corridor is in LTD's Long Range Transit Plan as an MX corridor. So, that's good to know. All of the major corridors identified in Envision Eugene are slated for MX service. The current project, Moving Ahead, is moving towards decision-making later in 2020, but the two options that are on the table for River Road are MX or Enhanced Corridor, which is kind of a lesser version of MX. And so, either one of those options is consistent with an idea of directing compact development to the corridor. And that's why this study was initiated, was to tie together the land use planning with the transportation investment along the corridor.
Thanks.
I have Commissioner Brofsky in the queue, and then Commissioner Taylor. I'll circle back.
Thank you. I think that what I see here is very encouraging, but I have concerns. You know, I've seen a very well-thought-out plan. When it goes and hits, when it hits the actual code part, blow up. That's what happened in South Willamette. You know, when somebody comes and says, they're going to put a quad, they're going to be able to put a quad next to you on an unimproved street with no sidewalks, then somebody's going to say, oh, I don't like this plan. So, one of the concerns that we've seen in River Road and that has come before our commission a couple of times is the nature of the transportation's network off of the road, the unimproved streets, no sidewalks, and densifying those. And so, I think somewhere in this plan, there needs to be something that addresses that, you know, that if we're going to, if we're going to put a bunch of more housing or even more dense housing on some of these transportation corridors, how is that going to get taken care of? Who's going to pay to upgrade those streets? Who's going to give up there right away to put in the sidewalk? So, that's one of my concerns because I'd like, I like kind of what Mr. Handy said, you know, we can build the plan, but if it doesn't get implemented, it sits on the shelf, right? And I think those are some of the areas that we need to look at and say, this could be implemented. That could stick this on a shelf. The other thing I'm concerned about, and I don't know where it's being addressed, but we're missing, we're going from C1, C2 to corridor mixed use. That has a fairly significant change to what you can do on those properties. And there's financial things that that goes along with. You know, if I'm on C2 right now, I can go to 120 feet. Now, I'm going to be able to go to 60 feet. And we have laws that say if you change the zoning and reduce the value of your land, you either got to waive it or pay that change in value. So, I don't know how that's going to be taken care of. And then the last thing you said was those little white lines being, what did you call them?
It's for potential frontage activation requirements.
Okay, so to me, that means takings. Because if that, if those are, if those are somebody's land and you say, today, I can, I can use that land and build this 10-foot setback, and now you're saying you've got to set that aside for people to walk through, that is, that says that, to me, that is a, I wasn't clear on that, and it looks to me like a taking.
Yeah, I'm going to go through this in more detail in the next section, but just to clarify what those zones are, it's more about creating this 20-minute neighborhood and what type of uses you need in these key centers. You know, again, it goes back to the centers-notcenters idea. And there's different ways that cities can go about ensuring that they create these centers. One, which is probably the most drastic measure, would be requiring a certain amount of retail at these locations. And then there's other ideas that we're presenting that it might be a set of design standards that requires a certain type of ground floor form that in, in a good market could have retail on the ground floor, in a softer market can have other types of active uses. But it does not pertain to takings or setbacks. It's more about land use and creating centers-notcenters.
Okay. And I was just a little, you know, I saw them as white sidewalks or whatever. And then the last little thing that I want to mention to you guys, and I'm sure staff has mentioned it as well, in one of the slides, you talked about the economic impacts and how things are going to get built and what, and you, and you put MUPD up there. And just, if we're putting this forward as a planning commission and as a community area, saying this is what we'd like to get built out here, and one of the ways that we want to get it built may require MUPD, that message has to get sent to our elected officials. Because right now, the political landscape is, MUPD is a hot plate that you don't want to touch in the city of Eugene. And if the, if the neighborhood associations and the people that have been doing a lot of work on this feel that that is going to be an important tool to get it, this plan to fruition, they're going to have to help drive that bus as well, say, we're okay with a developer coming in here and maybe getting a 10-year tax thing to build a beautiful building where we want it on River Road. So, those are just a few of my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor, I'll go back to you, and then I'll go back to Commissioner Ramey.
I just inadvertently left out something. And once again, it just really has to do with use of language. So, this is a really great opportunity. We take a look at this area as kind of a pilot. So, not only looking at what's existing in terms of language, but strategically looking and projecting the future. Because quite frankly, I recognize all neighborhoods are unique. So, there's going to have an element of uniqueness, but where there's not uniqueness, let's create a level of consistency intentionally. So, for instance, corridor mixed use. Let's try to use that wherever these are applicable throughout Eugene. So, thinking about it in terms of not borrowing from other states, but what do we have now? Who's Eugene? And what is the language or the terminology that wants to be used in the, in the future? So, it's not only what's existing, but how are we going to create this framework that we can use more commonly in the future? I think it's really, because it gets, as you know, those that use code, it gets really complicated if everything's unique. It creates a lot of confusion, and there could be a lot of similarities, and then there's one slight variation. But the more we can get that intentional consistency, the better. So, thanks.
All right. I'll go to Commissioner Ramey and then Commissioner Baker, and then I'll put myself in the queue.
So, I have a couple of questions about the map and particularly the colors that are red and orange, I think. The red was the core mixed use and orange was core residential. So, if I, and the little blue dots are the notes. If I was drawing a diagram, I would think that every blue dot would have a red circle around it. I know they're not all circles, but it'd have a red cluster. And then the orange would stretch in between the red down the corridor. So, you'd have this repeated kind of situation. That isn't what's on that map. And I don't know if you can tell us in the time before today, you know, what that is, but you might think about that because certainly that does not seem consistent with the way it's described and the way it's mapped. The second problem is that in many cases, the red is allowed to touch the light yellow without an intermediate orange, and that by definition sets up a problem. It's the old problem, R1 to R4, there's no transition. So, if we're, if we're going to have a transition, I think, I think the language of the, of the orange color even says it's supposed to be the transition between the core mixed use and the RM now, but yet on the map, it isn't, that isn't always how it's used. So, there's some inconsistencies between the way that's mapped and the way it says we're going to use it. And the default then is to create very complicated things in the code that allow these transitions to happen back and forth. I just wonder if there isn't a better way to use this, this orange color that makes, it was two different questions. Use the orange as a transition, and then why do the blue dots not all have red? Why are some red, some orange, and some...
Just quickly, those are both very good questions. You know, I'll take the second one first. I think once we get a little bit more into the code framework and some of those development standards we're considering, I'd love to pose the question back to you again of if you're seeing that the transitions, the compatibility of those zones is a little more acceptable. I want to, I think we've, we're considering some height transitions, some buffering, some setback rules that we think really would allow RM and corridor mixed use to live next to each other.
I understand that, but that is a much more difficult way to solve the same problem. If you have this ability to grade the zones, why aren't you using that instead of trying to create a design?
Yeah, that's a fair question. And I think, you know, once we're, let's take a look at, I guess, all the standards as they exist now in the framework and the colors on the map. We'll think about those together and think about, yeah, what is the blend of either standards or zoning that's going to create that transect of sorts, working together? You know, we, we don't necessarily conceive of the corridor residential as a transition between the red and the yellow. It is in the middle in terms of scale, but it doesn't necessarily have to always exist between those two. And corridor mixed use, we're really thinking about is, or sorry, corridor residential, as a really suitable kind of way of bringing housing options onto the key, the main street and key side streets. Yeah.
And if I can address that too, you know, the, just the parcel sizes and their depth along River Road. You know, the, the, just the parcel sizes and their depth along River Road, there are certain areas, because of this, again, centers-notcenters, where you either have existing commercial retail or you want commercial retail, and you don't wanna necessarily upzone the current R1 parcel adjacent to it. So this is where more transitions are gonna be dealt with through design standards, as opposed to transitioning from corridor mixed use to corridor residential to RM, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the, the only piece I haven't gotten an answer to yet, maybe I just didn't hear it. Why is it the red more around the blue?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't answered that one at all yet. So the, the blue, and as Terry was mentioning, there's still multiple alternatives with moving ahead kinda being considered right now. And that includes where exactly they would locate stations. And so, you know, the best-case scenario would be some of these decisions being made concurrently. Like, these blue dots are not locked in, and they're not decided on in any manner, as far as I know. So we've put them on this map for context and to be responsive to, but they're not the only driving factor in where we're applying the corridor mixed use. Right now, we're using just that rule of C1 and C2 becoming corridor mixed use.
Well, in the hour I've had to study this, that seems like a fatal flaw. So if I'm listening, if I'm hearing what you're saying, is the transportation planning are not aligned? But that's what we should be doing, so.
Yes, I mean, I think, it's a good point in that neither project has reached an absolute decision yet that would inform the other. We're trying to stay synchronized on these as much as possible, and, you know, I.
Add something, Ben, that the land use is the driver, and so the community process to look at what is the appropriate land use comes first, and then the transportation system would try to be flexible to move stations and slide them within their half-mile guidance. All right, it's not half-mile. There's a station, optimal station frequency for an MX line to function the way that it needs to function. Yep.
And that's a half-mile?
No, it's not. I, I'm sorry, I'll need to look it up.
Okay.
So anyway, so if that's the answer, then put the blue dots where you want them.
Again, I'm just a little confused why we're not, force the hand of transportation to come back and go, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
No, it's neither.
Right, right. Okay, we'll take that under advisement. Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Commissioner Baker, and then put myself in the queue, and then Commissioner Taylor, I'll go back to you. Go ahead, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I wanted to agree with some comments that were made about the, on the east side, those narrow lanes without sidewalks and problematic fire access, and developing at higher density without dealing with some of those issues. I mean, I was, I happened to be there this weekend on Sunday at a, at a talk at the community center that's located on River Road, and there's literally, you know, the only way they had parking was by negotiating with the church a couple blocks away that you could park in their parking lot, because the little alley has no parking signs all along it, because it's so narrow. So, you know, they're really, and there's no sidewalks either. So that is, I think, something that needs to be considered, the infrastructure when you're proposing this, you need to also figure out how you're gonna get infrastructure. Doesn't help to have a sidewalk in front of a development out at the end of the cul-de-sac when there's no way to get from there to the, to River Road where you might need to take a bus or, or walk or whatever. And also regarding the issue of social impacts, Portland has a requirement now that on, I'm sure you're aware of the requirement on multifamily now, there has to be 15% affordability, not market-rate housing, but included in the project. So it guarantees that you have a way of your, when you're building new development, you're also including in it development to handle some of our social issues. And I didn't see any mention at all of that, but that's certainly something that I, I would think about. I mean, this is a new plan, you have the option to propose whatever seems reasonable. I know that developers don't like it, and they're building like crazy in Portland to get their projects under the wire, but that would have a significant impact on, you know, you would have a certain sum number of units that would really be affordable, not market-rate. And then I had some questions about the, the transition and the, to the river that's mentioned strongly, but then there are some places where it doesn't happen, and you have this corridor residential going all the way almost to the river. So I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, I, I assume that this, this corridor multi-use down at the southern end is something that's already zoned with commercial or industrial, but there's some stuff that changes to, to the orange that, that's not quite that far south, doesn't seem to have the, you know, you, you have a transition at the northern section, and then it sort of stops.
Right, no, that, that's a good thing to point out. With the Greenway adjacent parcels, there's a couple ways we're dealing with it. Where it's the residential zones, like in R1 right now, we're preserving that, so it's not getting the switch over to RM. Where it's the orange corridor residential, several of those, like down by Razor Park, are, those are R2 parcels right now. So that basically follows our conversion rules for that to become corridor residential. And what we're intending to do with corridor residential is make the development standards, transitions, and specific setbacks against the Greenway rigorous enough to ensure those kind of protections. So yes, it can be a little jarring to see that that's a zone change there, but the complementary development standards of that zone, we think will do a better job than what R2 is providing right now. Essentially, the same story goes for the, the corridor mixed use, where it's C1 or C2 right now.
Yeah, the, the thing about that, it doesn't seem to make sense to me to have, what, what I would suggest more likely would be maybe an overlay over this corridor residential for those areas within a certain dimension of the river, rather than applying it to the whole, trying to develop, you know, transitions, and then that they're only applicable in this very small area, just apply it as an overlay to those properties. And so, you know, it's, that way you can really target it to be specific to the, to the protecting the river. Because otherwise, what happens is a lot of these things get diluted over time during the process of development. And that way, you don't have to dilute those if it's important for those to be significant and specific. Then it's an overlay, it's separate, it's an overlay to this core residential zone for those properties along the river, and it's, you know, it doesn't have to get.
Okay.
So really quick, Commissioner Baker, we have a couple more people in the queue, and then Chris has a presentation for us, so do you wanna, are you done? Okay.
Oh, one other, one last question. The, the blue dots, I assume are where their major stations are now already, right?
No, not necessarily. The blue dots are the current MX alternative in the moving ahead process.
But aren't they also pretty much where their current stations are?
I think they're pretty closely aligned. I don't know of exactly one for one.
I think there are more than the blue dots that are shown.
Yeah, there's more current stations.
What, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that there's some, you know, there is some logic to their selection here, in terms of their priorities, probably.
Yeah, operational logic and all.
And, and there probably has, they may have some commitments to some property at some of these places and bus, you know, bus facilities or whatever.
So I'm just gonna chime in really quick with just one, one main observation, I think, that my colleagues have covered a lot of the other things that I was thinking about. When I look at this map, my biggest concern that stands out to me is how this is gonna interface with the House Bill 2001 implementation. And as I look at that and I think about the legislative intent, I mean, I'm picturing a scenario where all of this pale yellow would become the bright yellow, because this would all be the single-family options that, that the legislature is, is expecting us to implement. So I just don't know how that would change things. I know that a lot of that are unapproved streets, and a lot of those parcels are not actually in the city, or they're unincorporated. So I know that that's a lot to have to incorporate, but as we move forward, when I look at that, what, what, for me, what I would have liked to see more of is, is maybe more mixed use, corridor mixed use, kind of similar to what Commissioner Ramey was saying, is like, why is there not more mixed use opportunities specifically right along that corridor? And so putting a lot of housing there, because that's what we're looking at, it's all residential. You're, you're talking about a ma, you know, you're talking about a major arterial, and those parcels are currently, those orange boxes are saying that's where it's going to be residential. And yes, it could be, you know, buildings that are designed to be on those, but having a mixed use opportunity where you have a first floor of something else seems more compatible, but I just, I have no idea what the conversations have been in, in the meetings, and I don't know if the development community has, there have been folks within the development community that have weighed in to actually speak to what the financial feasibility of putting residential versus something with some commercial opportunity. So that was just kind of a, not so much a question, but just wanting to put that out there. And with that, I will let Commissioner Taylor had another question, or did you want back in the queue? And then we'll go to Commissioner Beeson.
It's actually aligned with what Commissioner Edwards said, and Commissioner Ramey, I actually, I definitely agree in terms of if, thank you, Terry, for providing that context, that LTD, that really planning's gonna lead, because I'd love it to be more thoughtful that those, those stations are actually designed well and in the right locations. And if land use is gonna lead it, let's take advantage of guiding that then. I like, I had the same, I see what's going on in terms of existing zoning to preferred. There, there's a lot of just basically changing. C1, wherever there's existing C2, C1, that's what becomes the corridor mixed use. So I, I think it's an interesting, I had the same observation, and I run up against it, some of the corridors that I've worked on, on the private sector, is where we can offer opportunity that's consistent with the, what the neighborhoods talking about, the neighborhoods are talking about in terms of their goals and objectives for the refinement plan. I think having some options along the corridor, and as long as the property owners, you know, it, it seems compatible having the opportunities, kinda like C1. Well, I mean, C1 wants you to have that commercial on the bottom floor, and it's got a requirement of percentage on the lot. What if you flipped it, and you said a certain amount has to have residential if we really wanna support residential, but you can have some commercial, and here's a percentage? So giving just an option, not a requirement, but an option, just for a little bit of flexibility to be responsive to the market and to what's actually happening on the ground in the neighborhood? Anyways, yeah.
That's great. Commissioner Beeson.
So, let's see, I've been doing this for about seven months now, and during that time, I think the River Road is, this is the third time I've seen a plan. I appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and I've been kinda watching it evolve and working to understand kinda where you're headed. I, as I went through this past several days, I like, I like what you've done here, and there's, there, I think it makes sense to me how you're trying to do this. And that's notwithstanding all the questions or the issues that have been raised, I guess I share those, and certainly wouldn't wanna see the answers to that. But I'm thinking you're, you've got existing pieces of property and zoning out there, and you're taking steps to kinda translate that into these four new zones that you've established in trying to meet the goals and so on. Having said that, I guess, and I've, I've seen the words and the concept of community outreach written in the memo a number of times, and it's been talked about, and I know that's gone over the last couple of years, a lot of effort in that area in the way of various committees and so on, and maybe mailings, and maybe even going door-to-door. I guess with that, my, kinda my question would be, and I know this is still, this is in draft, this is evolving, you're getting input on it, but as this has moved forward and continues to move forward, how are we reaching out to all of these, or are we reaching out to individual property owners that are particularly in this corridor zone and beginning to give them an idea? Are they getting an idea of what the zoning is that's proposed? And, you know, I guess that's kinda my question, how, as this kinda moves forward, you're coming back to us in March, later in the year, it's gonna be more finalized and become a recommendation onto the council and so on. How, how is that kind of outreach done?
Yeah, right now, it's been pretty broad outreach, just, we've sent mailing to the entire River Road and Santa Clara neighborhoods, letting them know about the preferred zoning concept. And as this becomes more solid and locked in, we do have scope to do direct outreach to property owners and businesses in the corridor study, to directly talk about these zone changes as they become more real. So that's definitely in the plan in the next few months.
Yeah, so as it becomes solid and locked in, or as it kinda takes, begins to move through that, it strikes me when you're going to specific pieces of property here that people would have maybe obviously a great deal of interest in how, you know, a particular zone, zone was selected and so on, so. All right.
Okay. We are ready to keep moving on. So with Chris, you wanna?
Yeah, let's adjust our eyes first.
Yes.
Do we need to keep this to three minutes, or should we go into overtime at all?
No, we only need.
It's 1:30.
It's 1:30.
Oh, okay, I thought it was only one.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I'm sweating here. All right. Okay, all right. Takes the pressure off just a little bit. So just quickly, we're at the, as we mentioned, the code framework stage. This is outlining and providing structure, so we wanna just quickly reiterate what it is and what it is not at this point. The code framework is intended to kind of restate and confirm design principles as we've gone through somewhat so far, to think about a description of the fundamental base zones, so the four zones that we've been describing for the past 90 minutes or so, their purpose statements, objectives, and provide some examples of typologies that could be executed within those zones. And then an early preliminary regulating plan, so the map we've been looking at, preliminary development standards, and an outline of design standards, both of which Chris will go into more detail on. What it is not is essentially a code at this point. It's, it's the early stages, you know, you're, you're writing your essay, and this is the bullet point outline for it right now. And so all of these various things, the map and regulating plan, the base zones, you know, the number and description of them could change, the standards could change. And I think the context of the neighborhood plan, the transit planning, all of these other inputs into the process are shifting and evolving with us as well, and we want this code to be responsive to that. So all of those things are influencing the way this is going to kind of finalize into the admin draft code in May, and then subsequent drafts through the summer and into adoption throughout the rest of this year. Again, this is a little bit of an internal slide for us, another one of those checklists that Chris and myself and city staff will be keeping an eye on as we're writing the admin draft code. This is in response to some city comments on the framework, and, and I think you'll see, you know, some of the comments you all have made in the last 40 minutes or so are reflected here, to make sure we're using clear and objective and, I think, consistent language, to make sure that our, our base zones are rigorous and potentially applicable to other corridors in, in the Eugene area. To think about new definitions when necessary, but not to create a whole lot of new vocabulary to have to sift through, and trying to keep the, the. and trying to keep the structure and the language consistent with what Eugene is doing already in Chapter Nine. And then, of course, just identifying in those subbullets, a bunch of the subsections of the code that we have to continue to add flesh to those bones on with citing requirements, the use list, lot and development standards, and so on and so forth. So these are all things that Chris will kind of point out where we are in the writing process right now. So I think, unless there are any questions about just these two and kind of what a framework is, I'll hand it off to Chris.
Commissioner Baker, do you have a, I want to try to keep it to clarifying questions.
Very brief. It's just, to me, if you, if you go back a slide, the, the purpose statements and design objectives don't necessarily have to be discretionary approval, but if they don't agree with the stuff that follows, then they need to be rewritten so they agree. It shouldn't be a situation where they're.
Right. Correct.
incompatible, or don't really fit.
Right. Yes. Thank you. Okay, so again, we're talking about creating four new base zones here. The corridor mixed use, which has a height limit of 55 feet and a bonus of 65 feet for affordable housing. A corridor residential, which has a 40-foot maximum height that allows up, you know, that typically allows up to three stories. And then the RM and RM Plus, where the RM is limited to 30 feet, and the RM Plus, which is just located on those key side streets, that is allowed up to 40 feet. I'm going to go over these in a little bit more detail. And I'm going to work through this chart of base zones, kind of starting with R1, and then going up to corridor mixed use, because they kind of build in a way on one another. And as Commissioner Chair Edwards pointed out, we kind of got thrown the curveball of HB 2001 in the middle of this process. And we're still working on how HB 2001 really affects the, one, the existing R1, and then also the RM and RM Plus. But R1 stays as existing outside of that quarter mile and along Willamette, where you saw the light yellow. And that will allow detached, single-family accessory dwelling units, duplexes, and triplexes. And again, these two are, our understanding definitely added with HB 2001. And then we have the residential middle. And that includes that list and then adds courtyard housing and cottage cluster housing types. And has the same height as R1. So the transitions between them will be less about height and more about contextual, not having windows facing, et cetera, in the design standards. And you'll notice, as you probably worked your way through the code framework, there's a number of areas where we're proposing having the development standards be by housing type. And that includes this list here. We feel there's enough difference between a duplex, triplex, courtyard housing, cottage cluster, townhouse, row house, that we're developing individual standards for those type that may work across zones. But the high-level dwelling units per acre, the height, is managed by the zone that they're in. So going up from RM, which is the largest zone within the River Road area, we have the River Road RM Plus. And what that adds is quadplexes, townhouses, and row houses to the list of allowed residential building types. And it also increases the height another 10 feet from the residential middle and the R1. And it slightly increases the dwelling units per acre. Now, a lot of this, the dwelling units per acre, we're still testing sites and kind of figuring out how that fits within HB 2001, and will be potentially modified through the admin code process. The corridor residential takes a step up from the residential middle options plus by eliminating detached, single-family as an allowed building type. Again, these are the parcels that are located typically along River Road, and it adds two-to-three-story multifamily housing types. But it's the same height, 40 feet, again, 10 feet over the residential middle and R1. But it allows, you know, a little bit more length in building and such. And then lastly, there's the corridor mixed use, which again allows mixed-use buildings, vertical or horizontal mixed use. It allows standalone commercial buildings, small shops, offices, restaurants. And it also allows standalone residential. But again, we're assuming it's at this denser building type where it's townhouses, row houses, or multifamily buildings. And then some of the standards, again, 55 going up to 75, higher lot coverage, potentially larger-sized buildings on the larger parcels, and open space. So as we go into the development standards by housing type, you'll see some of them have minimum lot areas. Some of them do not, as they're need to be allowed in any parcel in our understanding of HB 2001. Lot coverage maximums, usable open space minimums, that as the, you know, there's certain housing types, cottage clusters and courtyard housing that's really based more on shared open space, where some of the other types are based on more private open space types, and then additional building scale and form standards. So in addition to those development standards, there'll be a whole section of the code on standards and guidelines, broken up into two sections, site standards, that is really about the horizontal plane, and then building design standards, that's includes the vertical. And this is where you'll see standards on building massing, articulation, windows, doors, fenestration, the quality of the usable open space and such. So, you know, one of the things that we already talked about today is this idea of frontage activation requirements. And this is one place it'll be really great to get your feedback on at this time. And we know we have some work on lining the transit dots up with the red and orange, because these standards would only ever apply to a corridor mixed use. And, you know, what they can be about is about requiring retail in certain locations to create the 20-minute neighborhood. But the direction that we're taking it right now is not to necessarily require retail, ground floor retail at locations, but requiring a certain amount of frontage that is designed with the right depth, the right transparency, the right rhythm and scale of a commercial storefront that should the market warrant someone wanting to put a business, a retail business, a restaurant business in those locations, that that can happen. But that there's not a distinct required use in any of those locations. And again, this will deal with all those design standards that create a great active frontage. Secondly, in the building design, you know, we know there's a lot of sensitivity as these more middle housing types and even the mixed use and corridor residential, but up against existing, single-family detached homes. And so there'll be a robust section on how these transitions shall happen. And there's, there's more slides at the back end of this on ways that we're thinking of this. And also, these transitions to Willamette Greenway. And currently, we're thinking of adding these into the design standards and guideline section. But as Commissioner Baker said, mentioned, they could also be applied as an overlay district. But the direction that we've taken in the code so far is that these would be design standards that would just apply, just like an overlay, to parcels fronting a greenway. Lastly, I want to kind of go over the, the direction that we're laying out in the code framework of how we deal with design standards and get design guidelines. Currently, the most common distinction between design standards, which are required to be clear and objective in design guidelines, are they, they're kind of separate parts of the code. They, they may or may not speak to each other one-on-one. And of course, you know, a project can choose to go the discretionary route and choose the design guidelines over the clearer and objective standards. So what we are proposing to do in the draft admin code is create basically a one-on-one linkage between design guidelines and design standards. And what that does is it creates a clear path forward as, you know, projects come in a discretionary fashion to you, that the clear and objective standard is one way to meet a design guideline. And should a project choose not to meet the clear and objective standard and take the discretionary design review path, then, you know, they can be as creative as they like. But again, it's a discretionary review. And just some examples of how this linkage works, and it's, this is a cut from a code that we're working on in Beaverton, but the, there's a number of cities that are working in this fashion in Oregon. And so where the design guideline, you know, is more general, "The impact of surface parking and vehicles of the pedestrian experience shall be minimized. Dedicated pedestrian access to surface parking shall be provided." And then you can meet that guideline by meeting clear and objective standards that set out, you know, very distinct things, like surface parking, including driveway, shall not exceed 25% of area. A dedicated pedestrian pathway shall be located adjacent to surface parking, connecting to building entry and sidewalk. Again, I'm not saying that these are appropriate for River Road. I'm just outlining the direction that we plan on moving forward in the draft admin code. And again, this can happen for every design guideline and standard written as part of this code. In this case, active floor uses. It's a brief overview, but that leaves us 15 minutes for questions.
Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Borowski had hit the lights for us. Thank you. I've got Commissioner Taylor kicking us off in the queue.
I'm just going to rattle through them, our thoughts, because I recognize this is a draft.
Yeah.
So first clarification, when you say design standards, do you really mean development standards? Or are they mutually exclusive with our development standards? Or are you now creating a whole nother set of layer called design standards?
I, I don't think it's different than how it's been done, or it's not intended to be different than how other special area districts have been done in the city.
So our code calls them development standards. So that's one. Go through, I would scrub it.
Yeah.
Especially as it goes to the public. It's confusing. So if design standards are really meant to be development standards, meaning here are the code sections.
Yeah.
And then you've got design guidelines. So if design guidelines, if I'm understanding correctly, you could go through a design review process, not meet the development standards, but go through a design review process where you're meeting the design guidelines. Okay, we've got examples like that already. Walnut McShue Station, for instance, is one. Just wherever you can kind of keep that same hierarchy, that larger language would be awesome. And I like the idea. The only thing, I would review that with the neighborhood. Those design guidelines are super broad. So making sure that those design guidelines, when you go through design review, in, kind of include those goals and objectives from the refinement plan. Because if you look at our adjustment review, I know that's one of the challenges. Some of the adjustment review are really applicable. You get to the purpose. So you're not meeting the letter of the code, but you're meeting the intent. I would just make sure those guidelines actually get to the intent, and they're not so broad that you're not going to be able to get to the intent. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
That's our goal.
Yep. Okay. I'm just curious about the River Road RM Plus and the River Road RM. I actually am questioning, why can't townhouses and row houses be in your River Road RM? Because actually, you could get, they're going to maybe look similar. There still could be 30 feet. So that's just a question to consider. I have a couple of clients right now that were doing essentially row houses that would be kind of similar to an RM, not an RM Plus. They're working, they look, they look great, they're compatible, they seem to be consistent. The other thing is, I would love to find, we usually use heights. We have a couple of special area zones, and I know Willamette mixed use, the Willamette special area studies started to look at stories. I love to leave out stories, just half feet, let the designers figure out what the stories are, unless that's super important. I actually stay consistent with the code, once again. But that's really a question for staff. Is that a direction we want to go? Do we want to provide that?
Sorry, the stories were not part of the code, but just.
Perfect.
Understand.
Understanding. Okay. I have one more. I think this is a fascinating discussion, more on a larger scale. I'd want to be careful of creating such a unique zone. For instance, transitions. We talk about transitions a lot. We have a lot of R1 next to R2. We've got code that deal with transitions. I would look closely at what we're doing with transitions between R1 and the other zones, that they're consistent with our other zones, meaning that we're not creating this isolated neighborhood that has transitions that are addressed in a more robust way or a different way. Let's look at an at-large equity. And if it's the direction we want to go, then making sure to make notes that where there's more of our standard base zones of R1 and R2, should we be actually addressing those transitions? So do you see where I'm going with that? Because, so I'm not sure, because actually, RM and R1 seem to be quite compatible without any additional codes. I look at our current development standards, I think it works. So, but that's really a question for staff. Why recreate it if the R2, R1 transition works? Because you've got a 30, 30 feet. I mean, I just, so I would caution, look at it, see what do we want? And how does it impact the rest of the code? Yep, that's it for me.
Okay. I've got Commissioner Ramey and then Commissioner Borowski.
This is the, as everybody's already mentioned, the really difficult part of the, of the, making a sausage, that's a terrible analogy, but of what we're doing. And so I'm particularly interested in the last conversation about design standards versus, so the clear and objective versus discretionary. So if you think about these nodes, and what we're trying to do is create a pedestrian, I think, a pedestrian-friendly area. And by the way, can we be consistent? Sometimes we say quarter mile, sometimes we say 20 minutes, sometimes we say half a mile. I think somewhere along the way in storytelling, we should try to figure out what it is, what that is. that is. Because I'm not sure, is it, does it take 20 minutes to walk a quarter mile? I don't know. So somewhere in there, and as a part of telling the story, we're going to get there. So when you think about the pedestrian experience, it's access to light, sunlight. So from one side of the street to the other, if you draw a section through the street, you might actually want to think about either setbacks or step backs on the buildings. So the sun, and I think the road is probably widened up that that's not an issue, but I haven't, but I haven't seen any sections yet, so I don't, I don't know. That could be an issue on the side streets. Secondarily then, protection from the car, the moving car, traffic calming. What is there in the code that separates the pedestrian from the whizzing car or the whizzing bus? Because maybe it's stormwater treatment areas with trees in them, maybe not, you know, whatever, think about that. And then the last thing is what you all were talking about in terms of whether or not the building could be converted to commercial use or had to be, had to be commercial to begin with. And I think these are related, but I'm not smart enough to figure out how yet. Something about this sort of pedestrian-friendly nature of the area and the ability to convert it to commercial later. It's, it's, it's hard to imagine what a residential building looks like before it becomes a commercial building later. And I don't know if that, maybe that's just something I, I haven't really thought about yet. I think of St. Mark's in New York City where those are clearly, you know, half light up and they've all been converted to commercial uses, but they're originally residential uses. So somewhere there's an intersection. I don't think requiring retail is the right or commercial is the right way to go. I think requiring the framework that would support that in the long run is the way to go.
I just give one example that I, I saw today, that's actually really nice. The Tate, just a few blocks up, I think is a really good example where you have a great ground floor space that is currently an architecture and planning office that, you know, in the future could be retail if it, if it wanted to be, right? But I just wanted to give that example.
Could it be residential? That was the one I was having a hard time getting in my mind.
Okay, so, yeah, so with that, the resident, you know, there could be some sort of shared use for the residential on the ground, ground floor. But this is again, mostly for projects that would be mixed use.
So I have Commissioner Borowski and then Commissioner Baker after that.
So for me, I, I'm wondering if you've looked at, at the opportunity of actually form-based code rather than use-based code. We've got three people at this table that were pretty integral in the Walnut mixed use, which was a form-based code type of thing that said, "If you build it to the, we want it to look like this. Build it to these standards. This is how we get to transitions. We transition to neighborhoods. And if you build it, you can put what you want in there with certain limitations." I think we had said you can put a nuclear reactor in, but some of the other, some of the other things. And, and one of the reasons that I'm thinking that that may be more appropriate is because we're talking about, oh, we want to put retail in, in these things. If you look at the, at the, the way that retail has gone just in the last three years with, with, with Amazon and those types of things, if we're, if we're codifying that it has to be retail space, we may not get, get a building built. But if we codify and say, "This is the building, how the building we want to build should look and feel in this neighborhood." And if it's pencils out to make it residential, it's residential. If there's somebody that wants to put an, an office building with residential on top, that, that may work more. But that gives, to me, that gives, if we're looking forward, you're saying this is 10, 15, 20 years down the road, we don't know what retail's going to be 20 years from now. Heck, if, if you had asked us 20 years ago, "Where do you buy a book?", you'd say Borders. You can't buy a book in Borders anymore, right? So to, to do that, I think if, that might be something we might want to look at. We have had success with form-based code and getting buildings built in the Willamette or in the Walnut mixed use. Just, just a thought.
Right, Commissioner Baker.
Just quick regarding the issue of later converting to commercial, the riverfront district has, has some code language in it for some certain parcels that were designed to be, you know, up, you know, changed to, you know, office or retail. And they just require some additional height on the first floor. So that's something that you might want to take a look and see how they handle it and if there's anything there you can reuse, because that is already part of our code.
Okay, thank you. I told Alyssa I'd give her a few minutes, so I'm just going to have you take us, no, go ahead.
Okay, we need like one minute.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I can talk really fast. I definitely am a proponent, kind of water resource of there being an overlay with Willamette so other, other neighborhoods along Willamette River can use the same code, that we don't start creating discrete sections, if possible. If not, I understand. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, just, and I know it's a draft. I looked at street setback minimum, street setback maximum for River Road, for instance, corridor residential. You go to the table 5-2. It's got percentages, but it actually doesn't talk about minimum and maximum. So I don't know if that was intentional. I went there because of this reason. I actually, I'm working on a project right now, for instance, residential along a really busy corridor. It would be great to get some clear and objective without being forced into necessarily an adjustment review or a design review. If the building wanted to be set back outside the maximum, as long as it met certain objectives that are really important for the neighborhood and the city. For instance, you don't want parking between it. But let's say there's this lovely open space and you've got a great pedestrian walkway to residential, but you don't want the residential sitting right within that setback. Could that be possible through clear and objective without having to go through a special review standard? So just a question, because it's a busy corridor. So I like the idea of maybe some of those zones for the same reason. Commissioner Borowski, I was thinking about that. There's a real nice opportunity for form-based. But, you know, once again, I know there's inventory, we're trying to achieve a lot of things, but at least in some of the areas, what we want more flexibility. Is it working in Walnut McShue Station to get what we need? So looking at it, if it is, maybe it's worthwhile looking at. I think, I think that was it.
Okay, Commissioner Ramey had something quick, he said.
Really? Unbelievably quick. The shared public spaces in the MU corridor zones or the MU residential zones, just pay attention to that, because I think as we talk about increasing density and a walkable 20-minute cities, these little pocket parks, there's little, and there's some good examples here on, on this page, that I think are associated with the development here, but become shared by the community. And so how does the code actually encourage those? Because I think those will really, could be a signature piece for this development.
Yeah.
Really make it distinctive.
That's great. Incentivize.
Okay. Well, you guys don't really need a, like a specific motion or anything. Just wanted some good direction.
Just any additional feedback, you can send it directly to me and I can kind of combine everything to pass on to them and we'll be coming back again on March 10th to talk in more detail about the neighborhood plan.
Awesome job. Great job.
Yes, and I would encourage you guys, if you have specifics, if you want to go through and kind of dig deeper, that staff is really looking for that from planning commissioners. All right, Alyssa, you had something to.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a, a couple of updates, some upcoming deadlines and timelines. So March 1st would be the close for recruitment for planning commission. So again, there's one commission. Counselor, Commissioner Baker's term will be up, so we'll have an opening. There are also three positions open on the historic review board, so remind your family and friends and colleagues and neighbors that we're looking for good commissioners for all of those boards. Your next meeting is Tuesday, March 3rd. You've got right now two public hearings scheduled. The first is on a code amendment related to the downtown riverfront code that you saw in 2019. There's just some housekeeping related to the park and you'll be getting your agenda, you'll get all the reports and materials tomorrow on that. The other one's a little more unique. We're holding it for an appeal of a conditional use permit. So the Rest Haven Cemetery has an approved conditional use permit from the hearings official. The appeal deadline for that is actually, I believe it's March 2nd, which is the day before the hearing, but we have a little bit of a 120-day issue. So we will be, if it is appealed, on the 2nd, we will be holding the hearing on the 3rd. You will have the hearings official decision to you tomorrow in your packet and we'll get you the materials as they come in real time. So thanks for your patience on that. And then we'd have to turn around for deliberations on the 4th and the 9th of March. And we don't know honestly if we'll get an appeal. I wish I could tell you, yes, there's definitely coming, one coming in, or no, there's not. But it's, I mean, we'll let you know as soon as we know. And then your fourth and final meeting in March, in the first two weeks, is on the 10th, which is River Road Santa Clara. It's half the meeting and then the other half is the consolidated plan, which is kind of our local plan for affordable housing. And that will be with Stephanie Jennings with Community Development. And then you have about a month break. So after that flurry of activity there in early March, you've got a break until the 14th of April, where we'll be back with urban reserve planning.
Okay. Go ahead. So if we, if it, there is no appeal, does that mean we won't meet on the 4th and the 9th?
That is correct. So those are, those are contingent on the appeal hearing only.
Okay. Is that it, everybody? All right, I'll go ahead and close up meeting for the day. Thank you.
Thank you.